Got a file letter. We had six months. You didn't file it. Clinton, that issue is done. What's next? As well, if we at least see the...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December 12, 2006 meeting. The Glendale City Council being called order at 6:06 PM. Hey, we have a little call for city councils.
Council members. Mnuchin?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Quintero?
Here.
Yusefian?
Here.
Mayor Weaver?
Here. Flag salute tonight will be led by council member Yusefian. The invocation by city clerk Artie Casacchia. Please stand.
Put your hand on your heart. Can I repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One of the greatest football coaches of all time, Vince Lombardi, who led the legendary Green Bay Packers, is probably remembered as much for his leadership during football games as he is for his words of wisdom, which inspired people both on and off the football field. He once remarked to his players that "the price of success is hard work, dedication to the job at hand, and the determination that whether we win or lose, we have applied the best of ourselves to the task at hand." Let us pray this evening for success. Let us give thanks for the success that we have had this year and pray that we will build upon this, apply the best of ourselves to continue this success in 2007. We pray for guidance and wisdom so we may rededicate ourselves to the betterment of the lives of all of Glendale's residents in the coming year and work hard with not just the immediate future in mind, but the Glendale that we intend to leave as our legacy, as an inheritance to our children, grandchildren, and Glendaleans yet unborn. Amen.
Hey, we have your report.
The agenda for the December 12, 2006, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, December 7, 2006, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Before we go on, I'd like to read a statement. This community really got a shock today when one of its best-known volunteers, workers in the community, Tom Miller, died of a heart attack. So I wanted to read a little bit on him. He was 51 years old, and he had a heart attack this morning. Tom was the executive director of the Glendale Community Foundation, longtime Foothills resident. Was a graduate of Hoover High School and previously worked in the Community Relations Department for Glendale Federal Savings. He was named the Glendale Chamber Commissman of the Year in 2000 and was the 1999-2000 president of the 200-member Kiwanis Club of Glendale, the 10th-largest Kiwanis Club in the world. He also has served as past president and board member of the Executive Toastmasters, the Glendale Community Coordinating Council, and chair of the Glendale Healthier Community Coalition. He has served as the chair of the Leadership Glendale Program in 1995. I'm had an extensive background in media and communications and have been with the Community Foundation for 16 years. He was a member of the Glendale Montrose Veterans Memorial Committee and was instrumental in raising funds for the project. Tom was married to Suzanne Watley and the father of two young children who I know just simply adored their father. And he was a member of the La Conyada Presbyterian Church. Tom has long emphasized how the Glendale Community Foundation helps people feel passion for the philanthropy. Of course, it was Tom's hard work that made the Glendale Community Foundation a success. He will be greatly missed given his services are pending. And he was the foundation. It's a great loss to somebody so young. So we'll join the council meeting in his memory tonight. Mr. Yusefian.
It's with heavy heart that I have to speak today for Tom. I've known Tom personally for many, many years. We worked together in Glendale Beautiful many years ago, dealing with the Rose Spraining and Garden Show and Arbor Day. And he has been very diligent in working with Glendale Beautiful. As late as last week, he was working on it. And when I was at the symphony, I actually saw him on the first. He was sitting in the back row with his daughter. And I walked over, said hello to him, said hello to his daughter, and I asked him, "How old is she?" He goes, "Six years old." I said, "Boy, they grow fast, don't they?" He goes, "Yes, they grow very fast, and I will enjoy this." And I said, "Let's do lunch." And he said, "Fine, I'll call you. We'll do lunch in a couple of weeks." And this morning, I come here, and I hear that he has passed away. I still can't get over that. His face is in my, in front of my eyes all the time. And no matter when you met Tom and where you met him, he always had a smile on his face. And he always tried to help you, no matter what your issues were. So we've lost somebody that is not just the head of the Community Foundation. We've really lost a good man, a good human being. And I'm very, very sorry for their family, and my condolences goes to them. And I still can't believe it.
Mr. Mnuchin.
Yes, I would also like to join in relaying my condolences to the family. I met Tom in 1995 in the Glendale Leadership Class, and I have tremendous amount of respect for him and for what he's done with the Glendale Community Foundations. And it's with a heavy heart and disbelief that I also, like I said, relay my condolences to the family and friends. Thank you.
I also considered Tom a very good friend. I also met him at the chamber. He was very active there and served and always volunteering to do things. And he was certainly, he's going to certainly be missed in the city of Glendale. Very upbeat, positive guy who was just out to help people. And it's a real loss, that's for sure.
Okay, with heavy hearts, let's move on to the next item, please.
Next is Presentation on Appointments. At 3C is Agenda Preview for the Meeting of December 19, 2006.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we have for the Glendale Housing Authority professional services agreements with Tierra West Advisors and Kaiser Marston Associates to perform housing economic analysis professional services on behalf of the Housing Authority of the city of Glendale. The Glendale Redevelopment Agency Annual Financial Report. We have a joint public meeting of the city council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency regarding expiration of redevelopment project area committees. On the city council agenda for next week, we have a number of consent items. Director of Parks and Recreation, bidding results for the Glendale Civic Auditorium marquee installation. Fire Chief, fiscal year 2006 State Homeland Security Grant Program. Director of Parks, Recreation, Community Services, improvements at the Glendale Civic Auditorium Audio-Visual System. Director of Admin Services, renewal of lease for Employee Health Services Office Space. Director of Public Works, approval of final map for an 11-unit new condominium subdivision on North Louise. City Manager, purchase of replacement furniture for the Management Services Offices. Director of Public Works, approval of the final map for an eight-unit new condominium subdivision on Western Avenue. Director of Public Works, approval of a final map, condominium conversion, 18 units on West Acacia. Director of Public Works, Paramount Sewer Main Replacement Project. Director of Glendale Water and Power, an amendment to an existing contract with McGuire Services for an additional $90,000 plus contingency. Director of Glendale Water and Power regarding a large valve replacement project on Doran. And we have a number of ordinances. One is amending a number of sections of the GMC relating to the definitions of quote "lot." And two separate ordinances pertaining to the GCEA and one to the Glendale Management Association. Action items, City Manager regarding the Santa Clarita Rock and Gravel Query. Director of Administrative Services, comprehensive annual financial report of the city of Glendale for June 30 of '06. City Attorney, amendments to the city's Conflict of Interest Code. Director of Information Services, an edge-off contract. Director of Glendale Water and Power, design and construction of a grid-connected photovoltaic system at Glendale Community College parking structure. And lastly, a hearing. Director of Development Services, confirmation of resolution of an intention to levy and collect assessments in the Adams Square Business Improvement District for calendar year '06 and extend the terms of the management agreement. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now, what is next, please?
Next is Employee Suggestion Awards.
Okay, I have three. Is there one speaker that's coming up or just the three people? Rick Golick is the first one? Are you going to add all three?
Yes, they're all here.
Oh, good. Where did you get these nice frames?
Where? Office people.
They're nice. I'm going to have my colleagues...
Scratching them.
Yeah, got to separate them so they don't get scratched too much. Terry, you want to try one?
Which one are we doing first?
There are two together, Rick and Neil.
Which one do you...
I would like to, I'm Rosie Kopian, the program coordinator, Mayor Weaver's staff council, and I just wanted to introduce Larry Morehouse, who will be presenting the awards to the two employees. Please stay. So Larry.
There's a song like that.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Larry Morehouse. I'm the captain of the USS Grayson. Good evening, Admiral Starbird. I have two of our crew members with me tonight. Chief Petty Officer Rick Golick, Rick, come up, and Chief Petty Officer Neil Finch. And these two crew members of the USS Grayson pooled together their skills and talents for this one suggestion. So this was a team effort. And they're, they're both in on the same suggestion. I wanted to start off a little bit. It was just last week, I think Thursday was December the 7th. And as most of you know, the unit one at the Grayson Power Plant was synced online in, on December the 7th, 1941. And according to the, my math that I learned, that's 65 years ago. And that unit is still running to this day. So Mr. Weaver and I probably learned to drive on a 39 or a 38 or a 1940 Chevy.
1944.
44. But you can, you can imagine if you and I were still trying to drive our 1944 or 1941 Chevy around Glendale or Southern California today, we would probably have been run over a long time ago. But the, the steam turbine, the number one, is still running at the power plant as we speak. And the reason I bring that up is over, over the 65 years, it's really been the employees that has worked in the power plant over these years. There's been a lot of people come and go. Each one of us that, that came to the power plant, we submitted ideas, we did things to make things work, we tried to make things a little bit better. And over that 65 years, when you go down on San Fernando Road, that's what you see. You see accumulation of everybody that's been there over these years. And it's still functioning and still running. The, the idea that, that Neil and Rick submitted is no different than some of the ideas that's been submitted over all these years. Their idea, actually, they came to me actually about three or four years ago with the idea. And we were in the middle of deregulation and kind of a turn-down ratio with the power plant. So we, we didn't really know what was going to be expected of the power plant back then. So I took their idea and I just kind of filed it away. And I said, "Look, guys, this is a good idea, but we may not be running this equipment next, tomorrow, or a month from now. So I'm not going to approve this idea. I'm not going to spend the money." Well, as you know, deregulation changed, and now we, we're on a, we're on a, we're on the uphill of the curve. And we've come to find out Grayson is going to be important to the city of Glendale. So, so these guys pulled their suggestion back out and walked in my office and said, "What about this, Captain?" And I said, "Well, looks to me like a good idea." So, so I approved the idea and submitted it under, under one condition, that, that they not only, it's not only their idea, I'm requiring them to do the engineering and the installation of the equipment and making it work. And, and I expect, I expect a list of equipment on my desk no later than the end of next week so we can get on with this. This may be one of the best ideas that's been approved by the committee and, and the award, awarded by the city council because the return in dollars and cents to the plant and to, to our rate payer and, and savings of fuel and, and the, is one of the best ones that we've had. So what it is, we have a 300 horsepower and a 200 horsepower large centrifugal fans that was put on boilers four and three back in the early 90s. It was required by the Southern California Air Quality District and the EPA. And at the time, the design of these fans would, would be running at full RPM all the time. Well, it turns out that the way we operate Grayson, sometimes we're on the bottom. We run at minimum load. But the fan doesn't know that. It's sitting there running at full load. So if you drive your car down the freeway with the accelerator down to the, all the way and the other foot on the brake, your fuel charge and everything's going to go up because you, the cars wanting to go full speed, but you're braking at the same time. And that's really what, what's happening at the power plant. These fans are sitting there running at full RPM, and there's a damper, a discharge damper. And the damper says, "Wait a minute, we don't need that much air." So the damper is about one inch open. But the fan's sitting there doing 2,000 RPM. And what that does, that consumes a lot of energy. And it's, and we sit there 24/7 doing that on these two units. So Rick is mechanical, Neil is the electrical guy. So it's through the effort of both of these to make this thing work. So when we do get the variable speed drives on there now, the damper will go all the way open, but the fan will drop down to about 300 RPM. And the horsepower drive on that fan will be minimum horsepower. When the, when the, by the controls that Neil's going to put on there, when we do need to load the unit up, the controls that he's going to put on will say, "Come on RPM, give us more RPM." So it gives us more research air for combustion. So that's the whole idea of the project. The, the plant's probably got a lot of things like that that we'll probably be doing over the next few years. We got to squeeze every little bit of, of things that we can do in a power plant to make it more efficient. It's an old power plant, but, but we don't have another one to go to. We have to keep the one that we have. So with that, I'd like to present Neil and Rick with their awards.
Frank and Rafi are down there?
Congratulations. And since you are going to get that machine up and running pretty soon, can we expect our electric rates to come down like next month?
Yes, absolutely.
If it was up to me, yes.
Okay, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. And for the check, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now, let me, let me just say that I think the captain needs to start listening to the petty officers because they've obviously come up with a great idea.
Neil has his wife and his daughter. She's over there. She just become a new employee in the accounting office of Finance Monday, wasn't it? So she's a new city employee. Her father is setting a very good example for her, so I would expect her to turn out to maybe be director of finance one of these days. You never know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Would you like to say something?
I'd just like to thank Larry Morehouse for standing behind our idea and for being a, Larry's probably one of the most supportive of the employee suggestion program.
Yeah, I got, I think I have to concur with that. Larry's been an advocate of innovation, and you'd be very surprised on how much room he gives us his latitude to do what we do. And from that, there's a lot of things that have happened at the plant that he's enabled us to do under normal circumstances would never happen in any other facility. And also, too, the employees that we work with, we have the ability to facilitate all those, those needs that the plant needs. So it's really worked out to be a real good plan working with Larry and the boys. So thank you very much, council.
Thank you.
And one last thing.
One last thing.
Is I want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Troncozo and Mr. Bassin, who we all work for, and your support, Admiral Starbird.
You do a nice job, Captain. Larry, just a historical note, you mentioned that boiler. I happened to watch a little historical travelogue of Glendale and noted that, in fact, that boiler was under construction, being installed when the travelogue was made. And that boiler cost $1.8 million at the time. sizable sum of money in 1940, 41.
Yeah. One, one little bit note. We're overhauling...
I got him started.
We're over, we're overhauling number four unit right now. And I looked at the records. We paid 700, about $800,000 for the steam turbine generator installed. The contract for overhaul for that today approaches $2 million. Give you an idea.
Thank you very much, Larry.
Thank you.
And now Gina.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Matt Doyle, Human Resources. I'm here to present a suggestion award for Gina Gunderman from Finance. This suggestion is a lot simpler and a lot easier to explain than the last one, so.
We still don't quite understand that one yet.
And I assure you, I won't take as long as Mr. Morehouse. But anyway, this is a presentation, this, many of you know we have the Employee Suggestion Awards Program, which, which is a very good program, and we have a lot of, a lot of good participation by employees throughout the, the organization. We have big suggestions and little suggestions, and I would put this one on, on more the, the little suggestion end. This has to do with our Service Awards Program. And many of you have been part of the Service Awards Program, which we recognize employees at five years and 10 years, 15 years, and other significant milestones in their employment with the city of Glendale. For many years, we've given a service award pin to each of our recipients in addition to a, a, a separate award depending on the years of service. It's been suggested that the pin may not be the most functional thing to be handing out in this day and age. A lot of our employees, a lot of the men used to wear them as tie tacks. A lot of employees don't wear ties. A lot of the women, I'm told, don't wear these as, as pins anymore. So what Gina has come up with is a suggestion on perhaps a more functional recognition for the, this, the Service Awards Program. And we've looked at her suggestion, and we, we're looking at things like pens, pen sets, a clock, perhaps a watch. And Gina actually went to the, the trouble of, of looking up pricing and different options for these, these, these different options. And it, it turns out that, that they would be a good idea and I think a lot more functional for, for people to use. And in some instances, we would probably save money in, in that regard. So with that, this is a, a $100 gift suggestion, and I want to present Gina Gunderman from Finance.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have the check that goes with this?
It was not on here. Ask Mr. Prince.
Yeah, that was already...
Okay, I want to make sure we didn't put it in the wrong spot. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So when will we have those new award things? January awards?
We're looking at January.
Okay. Congratulations. Good thoughts. Okay, what is next, please?
At 3C is Commendation to GYA Sponsors.
Okay. First up, Rita. For Mike Antonovich. Bob, you want to pass that one down? Take that down? To the supervisor. And then the second will be the Olive Garden Italian Restaurant. They, oh yeah, I've seen you there. Sorry, you're in a suit. Third is Glendale Water and Power. Who's representing Water and Power? Here he comes. Want to do that one? And the last is Greg Bustjager, Amora Foundation. I see who's standing in for him.
I think Mr. Antonovich looks much, much better now.
Yes, yes. I agree.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. very much, Bob.
Thank you for the support you've given to the GYA. It's a very, very worthwhile program, what it does for the youth. And it's a very small recognition, but say anything you'd like, Rita.
Thank you, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I'm honored to accept this on behalf of Supervisor Mike Antonovich and as chair of the GYA. I'd like to personally thank all of our sponsors, and in particular heartfelt thanks to the city council. You have always been the top supporter of the Glendale Youth Alliance, and investing in our youth is an integral part of ensuring a positive future for all of Glendale. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else you'd like to speak? Olive Garden, Starford?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in the spirit of giving and keeping the legacy of Greg Bustjager alive, I have another check here for the Youth Alliance for $4,000, which I'd like to give to Rita.
Thank you.
So, and again, thank you, thanks again for all your support.
And you have a $4,000 check, too?
It'll be in lasagna, is that okay? No, I'd just like to take the opportunity to concur with Rita, saying we do appreciate the support for the Glendale Youth Alliance. And by me being the one on the chair as well, I'd just like to say thank you, and we appreciate supporting the kids. And it's all about the future of the youth. So we just want to continue the support, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And Water and Power?
I'm Ned Bassin. And again, just as supportive of the youth, they do a wonderful job. We've been a longtime supporter, and we're very pleased to be here.
Thank you.
At 3D is Commission on Status of Women, Presentation to Habitat for Humanity Exams Build Team.
Okay, who's coming forth?
I'm Carla Curlin, the Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women. With me is my fellow Commissioner Paula Devine. And from Habitat for Humanity, representing the Women's Build Team is Diane Moore. The commission is pleased tonight to present checks totaling $1,415. This brings our total pledge to the Women's Build Team to $5,338.05, which slightly exceeds our goal, which was initially $5,000. We're delighted, and we really, really want to thank everybody who helped make this happen by contributing in addition to the commission's own money, which we put up. We fundraised to, from the community to get the additional money. So we want to thank everybody who participated. So here's our checks. And the Women's Build Team has nearly met their, their deadline and their goal, but not quite. So if Diane Moore could address as to where their shortfall is so that the community could be encouraged to give further.
Thank you, Carla. Thank you, Glendale, and all of the members of Glendale that live here and are friends and supporters. The Women of Sangape Valley Habitat for Humanity have worked long and hard for our goal, which is $100,000. We are at 72, 890. And it's not too late for the end-of-year gift giving to give more for this Women's Build that will add beautiful homes for deserving families in your community for the Kenwood Project. We have had more than generous amounts of support from our Glendale Commission on Status of Women. I have seen ladies stop people going down Cruz Knight Street and grabbing them, and they, your community was just giving from the heart. They were able to, I raised $500, $573 in that one night. And then it was met, it was met, then we had a match. So Glendale has been, as I had mentioned before earlier in the year, Glendale... So Glendale has been, as I had mentioned before, earlier in the year, Glendale has been wonderful. I do appreciate your support, we do appreciate your support. We ask you to stay the toll with us, continue with the support because your gift giving is going to be an enduring gift that is going to pass down generations to wonderful community of people that need to have support and a safe and sanitary housing living situation. Thank you so much and I, if I could, I would love to be able to leave a little information on the table. If you would like, you may go on our website, it's san gabriel valley habitat for humanity.org, really under S G V dot org, S G V Habitat, excuse me, dot org. And you would be able to obtain our, our gift giving numbers and I do thank you so much for your time and for the support of the Commission on Status of Women. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Good evening. What is next, please?
At three E is reappointment of Mr. Sam Esmanukian to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll move Mr. Manukian to be reappointed to the BZA.
Second.
No objection, roll call.
Council members, Manukian?
Just for the record, Mr. Manukian, no relation to Mr. Manukian. Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Giuseppe?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. Next.
At three F is reappointment of Mr. Jordan Lee Torgerson to the Planning Commission.
Move three F.
Second.
Okay, I have one card, Herbert Milano, two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Herbert Milano, Mayor Weaver, member of the City Council, City Staff. Whenever I have an experience with any board and commission, and I think I have participated in just about all of them, there might be a couple that I have not participated in, I look for, I look to see how welcoming a particular board or commission is, especially the Chair, with regard to oral communications. And I felt that the issue of oral communication is so important because it is the one way in which the residents of Glendale can give their input to decisions that are being taken by a board or being considered by a commission. My experience a few months ago at this commission was a very sad one indeed. There was a study session on the downtown specific plan. And in that study session, the Chair began with the words, because it's a study session, there will be no oral communications. I soon got up, walked up to the clerk and talked to, and directed my comments to Mr. Mike Garcia, to the fact that it would be in violation of the Brown Act not to have the general public participate. And I think it calls for not just this, this particular commission and other commissioners that are being selected, that one of the most important things that we have in the city is participation by the public, that it be welcomed, that we feel that we can participate and give our input. And I feel that this particular commission did not welcome the public and rather that we felt that our input was not welcomed. Thank you very much.
Is the motion on the floor in a second? Discussion, roll call.
I have a question.
Mr. Giuseppe?
I have a question from the City Attorney. Generally, when we have had study sessions on, on dais, we always have ability for speakers to speak on that item. We don't call it oral communication, we just on that item you can speak. I'm assuming that is the same with other commissions, isn't it?
Yes, that is correct. Study session is essentially a special meeting, in which case the Brown Act requires an individual to be given an opportunity to speak on the item that is on the agenda, that's the subject of the meeting.
And I hope that whoever represents the City Attorney's Office to any commission, if something like it, I don't know if it happened or not, but if it did happen, I'm pretty sure that they would have told them that public has a right to speak.
And they did.
They did.
Mr. Garcia did correct it.
Okay. Thank you.
No more discussion, roll call.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Giuseppe?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. Mr. Mayor?
I have one item on this presentation. We had the opportunity to appoint somebody to DRB one. We have been looking for landscape architect. The time had closed and we received the application. By code, we're required to appoint a landscape architect because Mr. Tyson resigned. We need to have a landscape architect. I do have applications, all of them happen to be either contractors or they are architects, but they're not landscape architect. So I would like to reopen this section and once again, I would please urge the community members, if any of them happen to be a landscape architect, to please apply.
Okay, Mr. Giuseppe, if you know of a landscape architect, go after them. Tell them to do some community service. Okay, there was something else. Oh yeah, I know what it is. Hey, Bob Franz, would you come up? I knew there was something, I forgot. This is your last council meeting, isn't it?
Help to review the calendar today? It's next week?
He's on call, but couldn't let you go. I wasn't there yesterday, Mr. Franz, for your cake and everything else ceremony because I planned to give this to you tonight. So I would like to read what we wrote for you. There's commendation to Bob Franz in recognition of the exemplary commitment to the city of Glendale, demonstrating the highest values of integrity, professionalism and community service and with sincerest gratitude for your visionary leadership. As our Administrative Service Director, under your expert and caring guidance, the city achieved success with a new financial accounting system, effectively combined the human resources and financial functions, elevated our employee relations to even higher levels of cooperation and achieved a significant milestone in the development and implementation of a premier long-range financial planning model, this being only a few of your many accomplishments. Your personal commitment has brought honor, integrity and respect to the position you've held the past eight years with the city of Glendale. Bob, you will be greatly missed by the many people that have had the privilege of working with you. Best wishes on your new endeavor with the County of Orange. And they're going to luck out getting you doing the long-range financial planning for the County of Orange. And a much shorter commute, right?
Correct.
Well deserved. We just had to do this when you were leaving.
Are you taking any of our secrets over to Orange County?
No, we've copyrighted everything. The, the cycle of life, we've copied that. We've copyrighted all that.
You may say a few. On your behalf. The, I'd, I'd be honored to say a few words. I'll take a lot of the secrets because they're not really secrets, they're, they're just good approaches that I've learned here in Glendale. And I was sitting in the audience reflecting about the, eight years ago, a little over eight years ago, my first time in this council chambers and had a very positive feeling, a very, I remember coming to the meeting and being very, very impressed with the caring of the City Council towards the issues that were in front of the council, towards the people that were, were here. And it was just a very good, warm feeling that, that I felt that evening that was very impressive. And I was very proud that evening to, to, to be in that position where I was coming to work for this city. And I have to say here, today, I'm even prouder to have been in this position for the last eight years and have this opportunity because this is really a great city. It has been an ideal situation for me in many ways. I've, I've worked closely with Mr. Starbird and the executive staff and a number of different people in the City Council, but there's, there's been that consistency on the council of making good decisions, of that caring, of that wanting to do the right thing, wanting to listen to people, genuinely listening to people. And, and working with people on the executive staff and throughout the city that really are at the top of their profession. You really, you are lucky as a City Council, we, we are lucky in the city to have such a top-notch staff doing just, just good work for the city. So this, as you've heard me say, it's on my, what I call the never-ending farewell tour that I, seems like I've been on in the last month, that this has been a very difficult decision for me because I, I know the uniqueness, having worked in other cities, I know the uniqueness of this, this position that I've had with the city and I know the uniqueness of the variety of things in the city of Glendale organization that makes it just a wonderful, wonderful place to work. So if it weren't for the commute, you know, and this crazy living situation that I've had for the last, for the last eight years, for a while, commuting daily for a long way and then living half here and half at my home in Huntington Beach, if it weren't for that, I, I really never thought I would be in this position to do anything except stay here until I was ready to retire. So it's with a lot of mixed feelings that I am moving on to another opportunity, but it has its challenges. I'm looking forward to it and it's a, it's a very wonderful opportunity I'm going to. So thank you very much, you've been very good to work with.
Bob, one thing, you had such great, I believe, speaking for my colleagues, you had such great credibility with all of us. When you spoke, there's not often that we came back, well, other than Mr. Manukian, sometimes as a CPA criticizing or saying you're wrong. You came across so well, you were so well-versed and always gave us good information over the years. I do know that the most common phrase I heard when we heard talk about you may be leaving, most common theme I heard around here is, you'd be very stupid not to take the job. I mean, it's right up your alley what you want to do, closer to home. I don't know if it's closer to the Laker games, but it's going to be closer to a lot of your, your life and you're making the very smartest move you can, but we'll sure miss you.
Thank you for those kind words.
Mr. Manukian?
Just, just to make. Just to make a correction, I don't recall me saying you were wrong in any instance or criticizing, I always, I always made suggestions in terms of the financial statements and questions about items on the financial statements and you've always been forthcoming on, on my questions and, and responded to them in a professional manner. And I appreciate that, I appreciate what you've done over the past eight years with the finance department and I hope you stay in touch. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
You will leave your phone number, your email, address, et cetera, et cetera, right? Mr. Montero?
Yes, well, Mr. Franz, you are the consummate professional and unlike many mathematically inclined people, you were always capable of expressing your, your opinions and enlightening the City Council and I think it's a tribute to you that you're moving on to this position and is certainly a step up in terms of your professional life. And so congratulations to you, hopefully Orange County's real estate values will stay up and you won't have to, you won't have to balance too many vols, but congratulations because it's certainly, certainly well deserved.
Thanks.
Mr. Starbird, do you want to say?
Well, just, just quickly and Frank really said this in part, and that says a great deal about Bob Franz, he's been selected for what's really one of the highest positions in, in finance management in the County of Orange. But I think it says a lot for Glendale as well, that one of our executives has been tapped for a position of responsibility. Bob's done a tremendous job here and there's some parts of what he's done that will have a very, very difficult time filling. There are other parts that I think Bob has left, people that have worked with him in a good position, well-trained, that I think will continue to carry on. As I'm fond of saying, as executives have, have left Glendale, that Glendale attracts very good people. People like Bob can never be replaced in, completely, but we will continue to attract good people who will continue to carry on because of the values that the city and the community and the organization hold for its public service employees. And Bob really extols that 100%. So I want to thank him myself.
Mr. Najarian?
And Bob, no doubt, I think you can attribute your, your great level of success professionally to your impeccable educational background, starting with, with Occidental College and we hope that as a fellow Tiger, that you, you move on to Orange County and do not just the city of Glendale proud, but the great Occidental College family proud as well. Thank you, we're going to miss you.
Mr. Giuseppe?
On a lighter note, I just want to let you know that I had an opportunity to attend Bob's farewell party yesterday and on behalf of the council, I gave him a dollar and told him to grow it. And I know he will, but Bob told me one thing, that is, he may not come back for another study session, but he says, anytime you want to call me for a basketball game, I will be here. So Mr. Manukian and I will be looking forward to the next game and, and you've told us you're coming, so I already got the jersey picked up for you.
You two playing?
You're, oh yeah.
You two playing, because that'll be fun to watch.
Sure.
They're good, they're good.
I'm sure they are.
Played once, but.
We won and the only reason we won that game is because he was our center. Without him, making three pointers from anywhere in the basket, we would have lost.
I learned that at Occidental also.
Oh, we thought that.
Thank you very much.
We wish you well.
Okay, what is next, please?
Next, the City Council or staff comments?
Mr. Manukian?
Yes. I just want to make an announcement, I, there was a request that I, since I go Montrose once a month and I go to Brandon once a month as well, there was a request for me to be at Adam Square. So this Saturday, I will, I will be in the Adam Square area, the Corner Cafe, from nine o'clock till whenever. So if anyone would like to join me for coffee or just a question or a talk, I'd be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Manukian? I mean, Mr. Najarian?
No relation to that, Mr. Manukian. Mr. Mayor, I just want to relate a story, an event that occurred last Wednesday. I was at my office and I got a call from my sister indicating that she had just been involved in a moderately severe car accident. I ran to the scene, rushed to the scene, I should say, and had the, the great opportunity to watch our Glendale Police Department and Glendale Fire Department, Engine 26 and the rescue ambulance that's attached to that station do an excellent job of, of what they do best, bringing, calming down the victim and properly tending to her medically, being sensitive to her needs and getting her on the gurney into the ambulance and rushing her to the hospital. So it's one thing to think about the fire department in abstract terms and just to think of it as well, they do rescues, but to see it firsthand with a, a close member of your family, really, really brought it home and I'm, I can only say the greatest things about our Glendale Fire Department at this point. So I think we're very, very lucky to have such a well-trained professional fire department in our city. So thank you, Chris, and all the firefighters at Engine 26 and the rescue ambulance, we appreciate it.
And a little, Mr. Montero?
A couple of topics. Number one, I had the good fortune to attend at the Mormon Temple in West Los Angeles, a Consular Core concert, that is, people from the diplomatic corps that live in this area and it sort of confirmed what I've always felt, how many consuls from Europe, from Latin America, from Asia actually live in Glendale or sometimes their employees live in Glendale. So it was quite interesting to, when I was introduced as a council member from the city of Glendale, I lived in Glendale, one after the other. It was very, very interesting. I think they all basically said the same thing. They came to Glendale because of the security and the cleanliness of the city, et cetera, et cetera. So it was very positive interacting with Consular Core. Then the second thing I discovered last week was the solar energy mixers, for lack of a better word. Solar mixing, the solar mixing equipment that we're doing in our Campbell Reservoir and that is quite an operation, solar powered, it will move the, the water around. and that is quite an operation, solar-powered, it will move the, the water around to provide fresh, uh, drinking water for all of Glendale's residents, and much to my surprise, they were all from South Dakota, evidently, and they travel all over the West installing these, uh, these units, but it's a South Dakota company, too bad they're not headquartered in, in California.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Yasefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, two items, uh, I think last, last week we talked about, uh, making comments on oral communication, uh, as I watched City of Burbank, I think they had a pretty good system which basically allows public to speak during oral communication, and then council members take note, and afterwards each council member gets about three to five minutes to respond to those comments. My thinking was that since we have council comments, maybe if we move the council comments to be after the oral communication, and we put some limits on time on that, we may be able to, let's say, to kill two birds with one stone, uh, so that, that may solve some issues, uh, there. Uh, second thing is, there has been some, uh, articles in the paper, and also some anecdotal issues about, uh, line 201 on Glen Oaks Canyon. Um, I, I had an opportunity, yes, actually Friday, I called MTA, uh, I thought it was the San Fernando that controlled it, it turned out that it was San Gabriel that controlled it, uh, it took a while, but I finally got ahold of Mr. Hennings, and he was, uh, nice enough to return my call. Uh, unbeknownst to him, I did not identify myself as a council member, I basically said, "I'm just a resident there, uh, and I would like to know what the story is with the 201." I'd heard some rumors, and also some information from some of our staff members, that this may, this line may be extended for another six months, uh, and also had heard that, "No, this is final, it's going to end on the 17th." According to Mr. Hennings, this line will stop on the 17th, and he basically told me that this is a decision that had been made several years ago, uh, so I asked him, "Has there any council member trying to, uh, speed that up, or any, anybody complained about this line?" The bottom line was, if any council member has called, has always been on the opposite, which is to extend the line, continue the line, and keep the time going, but that's a decision they made, they're going to discontinue the line, uh, for several reasons, one of them happened to be they're going to have bigger buses, and they felt that the streets were narrow enough that they couldn't make the turn, and the second thing was, uh, a lack of ridership, a very small amount of ridership. Uh, as you know, the staff have been working diligently with the MTA, and he told me that our staff, uh, we've been working with them to provide a stopgap measure after the 17th. I also told him a fib, which is, "I have a person who rides the bus to come, domestic help, so on and so forth, I just want to know what would she do?" And his answer to me was, "It looks like staff is going to be able to deal with some issue, uh, and you will have a stopgap." And I just want, uh, Mr. Najarian has been working diligently with, uh, John Obegdanian and Steve Zern with Mr. Hennings, and I will let Mr. Najarian read the memo--
No, I'll, I'll let him read it in a few minutes, uh, this is, I wanted to discuss some other things that, uh, during council comments. Um, I want to talk public service announcement. Um, I cut a tape a few weeks ago on pedestrian safety, between Friday and Monday, seven more pedestrian accidents occurred in this city, seven. Uh, none were, none were fatal. Again, between Friday-- Friday and Monday, seven pedestrians hit in this city. The accidents involved a wide-range group and occurred at various locations in the community. There was a fatal accident Monday evening when a motorcyclist decided to take on a truck at, uh, Western and Victory, and the cyclist lost.
Or the truck took on the motorcycle is more likely.
Yeah, that's-- Motorcycle was, uh, he was 45 years old. You know, in 2003, we had initiated an extensive pedestrian safety program, and I reinforced that a few weeks ago. We've been doing, uh, police pedestrian sting operations, which some of the public have not liked, when some of our police officers have almost been hit and killed by pedestrians that, I mean, by, uh, cars that even though they've seen them, they've tried to skirt around them, so they wouldn't have to stop. Uh, we put in 35 in-roadway warning light systems throughout the city, disco lights, we've done multilingual public service announcements on GTV6 and Charter Cable, we have signs on refuse trucks and B-line buses, we have teamed up with the group Safe Moves, and holding bicycle and pedestrian rodeos in locio, local elementary schools, we've created a walking Willy coloring book for the kids, pedestrian safety programs are local, uh, senior centers. In order this week, we launched a new phase focusing on senior citizens, which I participated in, and this phase will include workshops and walking tours throughout Glendale in a segment of the GTV6 program, uh, Senior Spectrum. Tomorrow night, GTV6 will have a program called Behind the Batch, which will focus on the issues of pedestrian safety. Program will air Wednesday night, 7:00 PM, on Channel 6, and residents can call in and participate in the program. I'm bringing it out again because no matter how much we talk about it, pedestrians, even, some pedestrians think they have the right of way, and they may have the right of way, but the car or the truck can still kill you, doesn't matter. And pedestrians at night, please try not to wear dark black, or wear black on unlit streets, it's very hard to see those people, and if you think the car's gonna see you and stop automatically, seven in three days tells you something else. So, if you're listening at home, please, please, this time of year it's really going berserk, and we're just now getting in the, the deep end of the holiday period, and there's likely to be more. Thank you very much on that, what is next, please?
Next is consent items including minutes, the following routine may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. I believe that was submitted for 5C, H, and I.
5C, H, and I will be pulled.
Move consent calendar.
With the exception of--
With the exception of those.
A second, a roll call.
Council members Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yasefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye, please read 5C into the record.
5C is Director of Public Works regarding renovation of the Management Services Office area at City Hall, change order number C104095. C1 is motion approving a change order and directing the Director of Public Works to execute the change order.
Barry Allen, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and the public, I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. The, uh, Management Services Offices area has certainly been in the works for, what, two, three, four years, and we're still looking at change orders and more money, um, I would have figured that by this time, uh, with all of the people in Public Works and project managers and, uh, people that, uh, look at the, uh, the plans and the council's ideas of what has to happen, and Mr. Starber's ideas, that this would've been a done deal, but yet we're still looking at change orders, and certainly will, will approve it and, uh, pay the money, and we'll probably see another change order coming up, uh, in two or three more weeks. I think we really have to pin down the problems that we're having that, uh, encourage these types of continual change orders on projects within the Public Works Department. Uh, possibly the three months' time that was spent to, uh, put together the paperwork to get an award, uh, maybe that time could've been better spent. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard.
Is there a motion on 5C?
Mayor.
Mr. Yasefian.
I'll move 5C, and, uh, in all due respect, uh, I, I looked at this thing as a contractor, and the problem with the change order, and I anticipated change orders, if you looked at the staff report, some of, so for the, for the benefit of the people who didn't, there are some credits, and, uh, there's a credit of 900, there's a credit of 1,000, there's a credit of 600, and of course, uh, and there is off, first offsetting on that. The problem is, this is, this is a remodel, it's like anybody who has gone through a remodel, when you open the walls, you find things that you didn't think they were there, and some of it is, uh, due to that, and we anticipated some of these things.
How much is it total?
Uh, total amount is $13,800, which is, which is, which is below what we anticipated, uh, will be the amount of the, uh, 15% that we put.
Thank you, there's a motion, Mr. Quintero.
I voted against this remodel, uh, originally, so I'm gonna vote against the, uh, change order.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Council members Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
No.
Yasefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye, please read 5H into the record.
5H is Director of Glendale Water and Power regarding amendment to contract for Chevy Chase 968 Reservoir Replacement Project Management Services, 5H1, motion authorizing the city manager to approve Wildman Inc. Contract Amendment Extension in an amount of $293,700 for consultant services through design completion of the reservoir replacement project.
Barry Allen, two minutes.
Wildan, is that Wildan or Wildman?
Wildan. Wildan, Wildan Associates.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, the public, I'm Barry Allen. Um, we have the finest staff that money can buy, we have competitive, more than competitive salaries, we pay more than other cities, but yet, yet on so many projects, we go out and we retain consultants to do the work that we ought to be doing in-house, it's another $293,000 on top of, uh, the other expenses of, uh, this particular project for outside consulting. Uh, why aren't we doing these things in-house? We have the staff to do it, uh, is, is there an explanation, an excuse, a justification, a rationalization, or is it just, "Hey, we have deep pockets, let's spend the money"? I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard.
Is there a motion on 5H?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yasefian.
Uh, do we have, uh, from, yeah, uh, do we have the staff who know how to design a reservoir?
Peter Cavadas, Water Systems Administrator, Peter.
Do you know how to reserve, design one of these things? Do we have anybody in the water department who knows how to design this and do this?
Good evening, council members, uh, no, the project's very unique, uh, redesigning a reservoir comes about, um, hopefully about once every hundred years or so. This is the classic project where you would, uh, contract out, this is not the kind of expertise you'd want to have in-house and pay for and have it idling, waiting for a project like that to fall in our lap.
So, we don't have somebody who could do this?
We do not.
And Wildan is, uh, has the expertise to do this job?
Yes, the contract with Wildan is for project management.
Right.
Uh, and they have brought, uh, to us a project manager that has 30 years' experience, very broad civil engineering experience, and he's a tremendous addition to, uh, our water department for this project only.
Doing this type of work?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Is there any doubt in your mind, excuse me, is there any doubt in your mind that executing this contract with Wildan is the most efficient and economical use of the public funds?
None at all.
And you would let us know if you thought otherwise?
Absolutely.
It wouldn't even be here.
Move 5H.
Second?
I just want to make sure--
Is there a second?
Nobody there.
Second.
Okay, is a motion on second, Mr. Manuchyan.
Under the fiscal impact, says the original contract is under 61, and the amendment 293, why is it--
That's explained in the report, um, we ended up doing more work with Wildan for the management of this project, this is a project we take very seriously, and we want to have, uh, the, the bulk of the dollars for this project will be the design and primarily construction. We're looking at this as being over $15 million, uh, probably closer to $20 million project. So, the project management in the beginning phases is something we've taken a very slow and cautious, slow and cautious approach. There are a few items that came up in the beginning of this phase, we had the preliminary engineering report, uh, it needed a considerable amount more oversight than we originally thought that it would. Uh, we also engaged the project manager to do some of the community outreach, uh, which was done, we believe, rather successfully with the residents of the canyon, um, and, uh, in, uh, we also engaged in a far more detailed selection process for the design consultants than we had originally envisioned. We wanted to bring on board a designer, uh, and went through a very rigorous selection process, that required more time. So, our contract, uh, did not have enough money, as we, um, originally asked for your authorization. I also would like to point out that this amendment is not only for project management, but it's also for the monitoring of environmental mitigation that goes with a project like that, that is a subcontract that is included with this project management work.
Mr. Yasefian.
Uh, you know, I, I know that you're going to take care of this, but I just have to say this, after having dealt with the police building, part of the problem with the police building was plans that were not complete, so consequently, as we, in, in, in trying to get this project built, we started a project, and as we went down the line, we found out, "Oh, this wasn't drawn, and that wasn't ready," and afterwards, there was all these problems. So, uh, while you could do that maybe with a building, it was not the best thing to do, I am hoping that before you start the project, you got your plans done, and gone over it, and checked it, and double-checked it, so when you start this project, no surprises for you.
That's certainly--
This is a big item.
That's certainly our intention.
And that's a sensitive area, and, uh, you know, we wanted to go without a hitch, so--
There's, uh, there's no in-between for this project, this project has to be a success in all of its components, the reservoir either works or it doesn't work, uh, and to that effect, uh, we've asked and received your approval to go ahead and hire the construction management team today while the design's going on, so we're getting constructibility review at this early time, so by the time we produce construction plans, they will have been reviewed with an eye on, can this be built?
Good luck, in my 20, 30 years as a project manager, I never had a contract that went smooth, never. Mr. Menuchyan.
This is the Chevy Chase reservoir?
Chevy Chase in Assisi.
In the, in the golf course over there?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Uh, did we ever look at whether that was, uh, in terms of conflict? Was it far enough away from my house?
That, we, we have not examined that.
Okay, so I'll abstain, just in case.
Okay, any other comments? Hey, we have a roll call.
Council members--
Give him any water.
Council members Menuchyan?
Stain.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yasefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Please read 5I into the record.
5I is Director of Glendale Water and Power regarding appropriation to transfer a walk-in step van from electric section of the water section and purchase a new walk-in step van for the electric section. I1 is resolution appropriating $40,000, and that I2 is resolution appropriating $85,000.
Barry Allen, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, Mr. Starber, the public, um, before I actually touch on this particular item, I want to thank the council for, uh, taking these consent items and discussing them with staff, and amongst yourself, and making the comments on them, that otherwise it would've been, uh, we're gonna vote for all the consent items, uh, boom, and it's all done, and what happens is that unfortunately, the public doesn't have the opportunity to understand a little bit more about them. Now, on this particular issue of the, of the, the truck switch, um, obviously, it appears that somebody scoped out their needs wrong, so they, they wanted a one-step van, and they got it, and decided it was not what they wanted, and let's give it to another department. Uh, that's well and good, but when you look at the staff report, look at the amount of time and effort that this had to take to put together the financials and transfer funds from one department to another department, from one fund to another fund, and, uh, then re-equip the vehicle and give it to another unit, why wasn't it just done right the first time? Uh, sounds to me like, uh, what's necessary, and I, I think earlier today you gave, uh, awards to, uh, city employees who, they understand what their needs are, maybe those are the people that should've been asked to scope out what they needed in the, the vehicles to provide the services for the public, and it shouldn't even be here, taking up your time. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard.
Here, is a motion on 5I?
I have a question.
Mr. Yasefian.
Could somebody explain to me, why are we doing this?
Could somebody explain to me, why are we doing this, so the public will know?
Yes, we're presently asking council for approval to transfer the vehicle from the electric department to the water department, because they have an immediate need for the vehicle.
At the water department?
At the water department. And that is going to replace the vehicle eight seventy that's in the oh-six, oh-seven approved budget. So that is just replacing the vehicle that's already approved. We're asking the sixty thousand dollars be transferred from the water fund over to the electric department, so they can purchase a step van. And that step van will be outfitted with the equipment and the cabinets that were taken out of vehicle five zero zero nine, which was totaled in an accident. Approximately twelve months ago, we had an accident that totaled the same vehicle, and we're trying to purchase the same-sized vehicle so we can put the equipment inside of it.
Okay, so, so in reality, there's two different vehicles involved in here.
That's correct.
The vehicle that we're transferring from electric to water, how old is that vehicle?
Approximately six months.
That's six months. And, and we knew that we needed a vehicle for water department. And, and the reason that happened is because it got into an accident?
No, no. The one, the, the vehicle that is for the water department is approved.
I understand that.
The oh-six, oh-seven.
Right.
In the meantime, we have had a vehicle accident with the electric department.
Okay.
So we have been, we were, that vehicle was ordered, and it takes, it took approximately eight months for delivery.
Okay.
So in the meantime, we're, we're saying we'll transfer that vehicle over to the water department and buy the electric department vehicle with the funds that were originally approved for the water department, and use the, used the equipment out of the vehicle that was totaled and then put it into that vehicle.
You know, I, I read this, and I couldn't understand this.
We were afraid of, we were afraid of that.
If you have a step van necessary, required for water, why not just buy it for water? And so this way, you just leave the electric, electric, and just buy one for water and outfit it for water?
The other reason behind it, in this period of two years, we're finding that step vans now are only manufactured by, I believe it's three manufacturers. They're not as available as they used to be. We, in the electric department, we're switching to a higher ceiling height of approximately twelve inches for the larger equipment that the electric department uses, and it'll be more convenient for the electric department to have the newer vehicle. They'll have a higher ceiling height.
So the one that you're transferring from electric to the water doesn't need to have as much height as the one that you need for electric?
That's correct.
So you're basically trying to make the best of the money. So you just move this over. This way, you'll end up having two, because you also have to replace the one that got in an accident.
That is correct.
Okay, now I get it.
We'll have two satisfied departments.
Next time, somebody write a staff report a little bit better. Thank you.
And I'll move the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Council members Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye, thank you. That concludes the consent calendar. What is next, please?
Six is oral communication. Discussion is limited. Item's not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker. There'll be no debate or decision. The matter, the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Do you have a first speaker, Dr. Richard Aspiritu?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council and staff. I am Dr. Richard Aspiritu. I'd like to start off with the gentleman, our Sergeant-at-Arms Officer Hancock. Last week, I told you that he got his ribbon for saving somebody's life. I expect that he has an obligation. His first obligation is to get home at night after he is off-duty alive in one piece. I don't expect him to run the Baker Vegas Run, but I do expect him to uphold the laws of the City of Los Angeles, the City of Glendale, the State of California, and the federal government. I'd like to talk about cause and effect. I'd like to talk about hyperglycemia. Person becomes unoriented, passes out. Mr. Hancock could pick him up over at a restaurant, taken into the police department, held there for a period of time, probably think he was an alcoholic and hold him there. Hyperglycemia is better known as diabetes. Twelve hours, the person can die. Blood sugar drops down. If you do survive him, you're frying the brain. Take another instance, person who has a petit mal seizure, epilepsy. Winds up one day, going out, all of a sudden, he becomes disoriented and forgets where he is. Police officer picks him up, handcuffs him. Last week, I talked about what happens with epileptics. And he wakes up, and he says, hey, what happened to me? Problem with that problem is, is that after epilepsy, there's a case of amnesia. I had the opportunity to talk to Mrs. Beers this afternoon, this morning, and we talked about soon, I'm talking about the sensitivity training for the Glendale Police Department. She said soon, are we talking geological time, or are we gonna do this in my lifetime? There was a situation about sixty years ago, we called it the one thousand days of Camelot. That was a situation that was very interesting, because those were the one thousand days that John F. Kennedy was in office. Chief Randy Adams has been here with the City of Glendale for slightly over one thousand days. He's had his time of Camelot. Why did he not institute the ADA sensitivity training programs? I have here from the Department of Justice, who happens to be my favorite topic when I discuss things with the issues here in the City of Glendale. They have online, you can either do it up with the dial-up, or you can call up and order videotapes, or you have an information number. These topics that they have, and I also have to remind you that the Justice Department is the agency that controls ADA. Mr. Kusakian, would you mind passing this out to the members who I've given, and one copy is for you. Mr. Manukian, you picked up the ball with ADA. Please don't drop it. Mr. Yusefian, we've had this discussion before about these chambers. One day, when you have the chance, or maybe, you know, in whatever time I have left, could you do me a favor, please? Show me where the visual alarms are for the people who are hearing impaired in these chambers. I can't see them. I don't know if I have problem seeing, but I can't see them. I know we're putting them in, but where are they? Okay? That was supposed to have been done a long time ago. I understand it's downstairs in various offices. Downstairs, they're starting to be put in here, but this happens to be one of the places where the public comes, more so than any other place. Where are they? And I hate to say this, but I thank you very much for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Dr. Aspiritu and I had an extensive conversation this morning on a myriad of topics. And one that I think is important to, to reply to this evening is, is one on the issue of training and the police department. It's important to note that, that the police department is in compliance, in legal compliance of requirements for training. There are no post-re requirements for the police department to have any sort of ADA training outside of going to the academy. A third of our police force at this time is, is fairly new, and they've gone through extensive training. Those who have graduated from the L.A. County Sheriff's Department, they've gone through six hours of ADA-related training. With that said, it has been a policy of this council, and your staff is following up on those policies, to make sure that we're doing everything that is legally required, but we also are doing things that are just right to do. The police department has contacted the DOJ, and they are obtaining pamphlets and materials from the DOJ. They already have some of the materials. They're waiting for some other parts of the materials to come in. They're going to have training that will start occurring sometime early next year. I didn't want to give a specific date to Dr. Aspiritu, and we talked about that and laughed about that, because I don't know the exact date. But it'll be in January, latest in February, and it'll happen at briefings and at command staff meetings. So I think it's important for you to know and for the public to know that this is not something that, that we take lightly. We've taken it very seriously. We've done a lot in the early nineties, and we continue to do so today. And I assure you that, that training in terms of sensitivity and awareness is very high on our list.
Thank you. Mr. Yusefian.
I actually had a question from Steve.
Yes.
That round thing up there?
That's, that, that is.
It has a little thing.
Has a globe on it. It is a flashing light that indicates to the folks who are hearing impaired that there's.
If you look up there, that's what it is. No, 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 look, look to the center of the room.
Looks like a smoke detector. It's in approximately the center of the room.
On the bottom.
You see the globe on the bottom of it?
It's like a saw.
It goes on, you will see a blue light. That's a flashing light, a pulsating light.
Pulsating.
Glenn Forshen?
Forsh.
Oh, is that an H, Forsh? Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Glenn Forsh. I live in Burbank. I'm here tonight to invite you to the Buck and Ballot Brigade's Christmas Party, December fourteenth, this Thursday, at the First Congregational Church. It is also a co-event with the Glendale-Burbank Republican Assembly to install their officers, and we are honoring Walt and Kay Hunt, who have been volunteers in the community for over fifty years, both in politics and in charity events and clubs. So I'm here tonight to invite all of you to attend, and any of the people watching this television show, you can go to the Buck and Ballot website, www.buckandballot.org, and for more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Next speaker, Barry Allen, followed by Herbert Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, Mr. Starberg. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. The, I pulled out my Ouija board, and Mr. France may have to find Bob Citron's Ouija board left over from the Orange County Treasurer's office.
They burned that.
Did they burn that? Oh, okay, I figured it had to be something, but I, but I pulled the Ouija board out, and I, I worked it, and I came up with a name of a commissioner, actually, on the, the Alex Theater Board, and Arthur Mangasarian, who has been appointed to that board. And I had asked the city clerk's office to let us know how many board members and commissioners had not bothered to fill out their statement of economic interest. You know, the same one that, the same one that you have to fill out, every one of you sitting on that dais. All right? Well, the Ouija board gave me a name, because the city clerk's office didn't give me a sheet. So I took that name, and I said, tell me, has this person filed the necessary form? Nope. Did you do anything about it? Yep, we sent two letters. First letter said ten dollars a day, fine up to a hundred. Second one said the FPPC will charge administrative penalties of up to five thousand dollars. Well, I think the last one, the letter went out in June. The sheet was due in April, still not there. So I think that it behooves this city council to make sure that the people they appoint fulfill the requirements of the statute. And certainly, you know, we in the city want to make sure that these people are law-abiding citizens like the rest of us pretty try to be. Now, that takes us to another issue, and that goes to something that Mr. Yusefian touched on earlier. I mentioned that Mr. Najarian had a, had a report on it that Mr. Weaver kind of turned off of the spigot. I had heard the issues regarding the MTA line two oh one, and talked to the MTA myself, after receiving numerous phone calls from people telling me that this bus driver said that, and this person said that, and don't talk to this guy, and the, the mayor wants to know everybody's name and get affidavits, because he wants to get one of the councilmen. Each of these things is what I heard. So I talked to the MTA, and they said, pretty much what Mr. Yusefian did, but a little bit more. They said, yes, we did hear from Mr. Yusefian. We heard from him last week, which would have been Friday. And he called to see what could be done, what the status was, and what have you. And I said, so what is the status? He said, it's simple. We gave the City of Glendale a year. It should have been six months, but we gave them a year to let them know that they had to make alternative means of providing that type of transportation. They haven't done it. We've found some money for them. We've found this, but we're still waiting for their transit. We've been working with Chano, we've been working with whomever, but they haven't done anything. One year has gone by, and I realize three months of that year was taken up working on a packet for an award for the, the Department of Public Works. But maybe that time should have been better spent, working out an arrangement to keep the bus going. Now, I do agree that when you talk about forty-one one-way trips and thirty passengers, it doesn't make economic sense when the MTA is paying about a hundred and fifty-some-odd dollars an hour to operate one of their buses. And yes, Glendale isn't the only city that's being affected. There are numerous other changes. In fact, if you look at today's L.A. Times, you'll see a half-page ad relative to changes in the MTA. And they are restructuring. The restructuring is going to be, they will be running main lines, and they expect other jurisdictions to start running the feeder lines to those main lines. And I think that's what Glendale's gonna have to look at, and I understand some of this was addressed in the short-term transit plan. Actually, I haven't, I've reviewed it, but I haven't seen where it is actually addressed. But I think that while we have been sleeping for a year, and we don't have anything going for December the seventeenth, and that's this Sunday. My God, how quick it comes! And before my time is up, I want to remind you that the first light on the Hanukkah is Friday, and that the Chabad will be having a candlelighting at the Galleria on Sunday. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard.
Herbert Milano, followed by George Robert Jeffrey.
Good evening. My name is Herbert Milano, members of the city council, Mr. David Weaver and city staff. Yesterday, many people know, there was the deadline to, for your first installment of the property tax. And I know that recently, those homeowners who have bought property, even a mother's home, may wind up paying five thousand or more for this particular installment. So it is no longer a chump change for those individuals who are buying property or just buying a new house. And I think that is really important, because I ask myself, what are we paying for, and are we getting our money's worth? A week ago, or a couple of weeks ago, I made a mention with regard to the property tax, and how it is that we should expect outcomes from the city, and especially information that tells us how we're doing. Mr. Yusefian said, well, it's only twelve percent. Well, it may be only twelve percent to Mr. Yusefian, but when you look at all of the taxes, we pay for our electric utility users' tax, we pay sales tax, we pay for our trash disposal, we pay for service fees. All in all, we have a budget of six hundred million dollars, well over six hundred million, and we have reserves of five hundred million. That puts at your disposal, councilman, over a billion dollars. Not necessarily all loose, you know, for you to use at any time, but it does make it incredibly powerful for you to decide who gets a contract, for you to decide what projects are going to be moved forward, what races are going to be submitted. I work in private industry, and every single day, we gotta take a look at our customers. Are we providing value? Are we providing value? Are we providing service? Are we providing quality? All the time, because we do not capture them. They can leave us at any time, and it is a constant and continual situation for all of us in private industry. What are we doing for our customers? How are we retaining, how are sales increased? But we, as residents of the city, are captured. If you perform or don't perform, we are captured. And on the other end of the equation, if city employees or management doesn't perform effectively, what happens? You're protected by civil service. So in a situation where the customer is captured, and where the individual providing the service is protected, we need something significant, and we need performance outcomes. So when we take a look at traffic safety, we have to ask the question, "Where are the measures that we will use to see if this particular program, or that announcement, or this other program is effectively having an outcome?" We don't get that, and that's what I've seen recently. So when it comes to pedestrian safety, we need to have the outcomes of today, and where we're going to be next year, to see if it actually worked. Otherwise, it was just wasted money. Cigarettes, sales for youth, where are the outcomes? By how much are we going to reduce it? Is there another way of doing it? Can we just bring everyone who has a, a large store, with the 7-Elevens, and the Ralphs, and the Albertsons, and so forth, and just bring them over and come up with a different alternative to be effective, instead of increasing the city's bureaucracy? Information and targeted objectives for every program. And I think it is something that we expect as residents. Those people who have, who are involved in management, they know what it is to receive targets, objectives, and measures. And it is my hope that as you devise new programs, or new bureaucracies, that you tell us what the expected outcomes are. Thank you very much.
George Robert Jeffrey Jr., followed by Bruce Grant.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver and council. My name is Bob Jeffrey. Last week, I brought to you a petition, asking for more parking at Spar Heights Community Center, signed by 118 people at the center. I pointed out why there is absolutely no risk to parents and children going to and from Fremont Elementary School. Yet, after I sat down, Jim Starbird told you, "The city has to address safety risks." This is the same incredible response as the superintendent of schools. There is no risk. It is all imaginary. It's an excuse. Jim Starbird has opposed the seniors directly on this issue. He told the city council that cutting back on parking so as to gut the use of the community center as a useful facility by closing off Paloma and putting in basketball courts and a kiddie park immediately next to our discussion room is good for the community. That's what he said to you. Well, I tell you that making it a shell of a community center by taking away parking is not good for the community. This is not just a senior concern, it's a concern of the community. Now, last summer, we were really glad that you, as a council, saw the situation firsthand, and came to a consensus that blocking off Paloma did not seem like a good idea. But let me point out, it was only a consensus. No action has been taken. So the risk, as far as we seniors, or as far as the community is concerned, is as great as ever. Mr. Starbird only has to wait for us not to be vigilant for him to have his way. We aren't brain-dead. So allow me to repeat, after many petitions to you, please take some action. Give us and the community the parking that we need. Make Spar Heights Community Center a going, useful community center, and give the seniors the relief that we have asked for. Can you honestly believe that it should be blocked because of a supposed risk to six children that does not exist? Please don't just do nothing with the real risk, that down the road, the center will be hurt. No one is suggesting that it be closed down, that's not the issue. It's a matter of it being a truly useful facility. Meals would still be available to seniors, but in far fewer numbers due to reduced parking. And don't listen to the objections of people that visit the site and find that there's parking when they visit. Of course, there are a few parking places available on many days of the week. But this ignores the fact that very regularly, when there are large classes in addition to the senior meals, or when there are special programs, the spaces are always used up. So it is just unfair to conclude that because it's possible to find parking if one, if one comes early enough on many days, there is no serious need. In my particular case, it's just physically impossible for me to get to the meals program on many days if I don't come one and a half hours early in advance and wait, and wait for the meal time. And there have been times when I've had to return home, phone, and ask for my meal to be held until after some other seniors have finished their meal and left, so that I can come to park. Others have told me that they've just given up and stopped coming. I ask you, does that sound reasonable? I don't think it is. And this is the way it often is now. The problem would be greatly compounded if the city manager and the superintendent of schools had their way. Please give us more parking, and block the possibility of things being made worse. Thank you very much.
Bruce Grant, followed by Jay Rando.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yusefian.
I have a question from our city manager. When we were there last time at the senior center, did we have that taped?
Well, I think you did. We broadcast those meetings, whether we still have the tape or not, I don't know. I think, I think we broadcast that meeting, yeah. So we preserved those tapes.
Could I have a copy of that?
Sure.
This was so wild, I'd like to have a copy of that.
Thank you.
Dave, for the--
Hi, Mr. Mayor, city council, my name is Bruce Grant. I'd just like to make a brief statement concerning your decision to enter international I didn't really know that any of you were elected to the United States Senate, or the United States Congress, who I think would be the appropriate agency to handle international affairs. So my hope is, and my understanding is, that, that you've written a letter on behalf of this gentleman, who is not even a citizen of the United States. You've written a letter to a foreign country on his behalf, and now that that is done, I plead with you to please get back to the business of trying to govern the city of Glendale, and get out of the business of international politics. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Rando, followed by Leon Mayer.
Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff, my name is Jay Rando. I'd like to read a letter from our homeowner's association, of which I'm a member. It's actually something nice for the city, for, for once. There's a copy from Mr. Starbird, and from Mr. Howard, and each one of the city council members. Gentlemen--
Let's give them extra time, can't we, Mr. Weaver? That's what you are.
The Verdugo Vista Homeowners Association had a potentially dangerous situation occur when a marble floor was illegally installed on the second floor of our building, causing extensive noise for the owners below, and structural problems due to the weight of the flooring. Having realized no resolution of the problem with the offending owner, we were forced to ask the city to intervene. As a result of the actions taken by the Neighborhood Services, Building and Safety, and the City Attorney's Office, the problem was finally solved. We, the Verdugo Vista Homeowners Association Board of Directors, would like to personally acknowledge and thank the following employees of the city of Glendale's Neighborhood Services Department and the City Attorney's Office, Jan Edwards, Stuart Tom, Neville Piera, John Brownell, Sam Ingle, Kelly Zelenak, Paul Early, and Milton Myers. Among all of these individuals who generally worked on our behalf, we would like to give special notice to two individuals with whom we interface the most, namely Milton Myers of Neighborhood Services, and Mr. Paul Early of the City Attorney's Office. These two individuals worked tirelessly, and above all, fairly, to resolve this hazardous situation. For doing such a superb job in dealing with a very difficult matter, we must seize this opportunity, gentlemen, to bring your attention to our city employees, whose expertise and professionalism are truly valued and appreciated. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Leon Mayer, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff, my name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Library and the Friends of the Glendale Public Library. And I'd like to join you in my shock at the loss of Tom Miller. Tom was a friend of the Friends of the Library, he was a friend of the Glendale Library, he's a friend of every organization he ever touched, and I could not begin to tell you all the organizations that he has touched during his lifetime. As far as the library is concerned, I'm, as you know, chairman of the Author, Artist, and Friend series. We're having our last event on December 14th. We would have liked to have made this announcement last week, but I wasn't able to because of the important calendar you had, which consumed a lot of time. December 14th, we consider, we consider one of the best programs, most important programs we put on this year, because it deals with the environment. And I'm not going to get into a philosophical discussion tonight about the environment. But we do have the Sierra Club Angeles chapter, which represents all the Sierra Clubs of Orange County and Los Angeles County cosponsoring this event. They think it's pretty important, too, that we put on this event. We're going to have two speakers. One is John Robinson. He's a historian, member of the Historical Society of Southern California. He's been a guide, he's been a trailblazer, so to speak, he's been a hiker, and he's been up and down the coast of California, from Mexico to Alaska. And for the last 12 years, he's been working on a book called The Gateways to Southern California. And this book will talk about all the horse trails, the Indian footprints, the railroads, the, all the history, plus the present existence of the access of Southern California. He has been associated, associated with the Sierra Club for the last 50 years. And to top off the evening, we will have Ed Begley Jr. speak about the environment. Ed Begley Jr. honored his father by becoming an actor. He was famous in screen, and stage, and film, and he was known in St. Elsewhere. He got seven Emmy awards for that program, and he's been involved with the stage and screen all his adult life. Additionally, he's been very active in the environment, both as a board member and activist in, in not only local, but state and national environmental groups, but he's also been given great awards by national, state, and local groups. So that's our program for December 14th at the Glendale Central Library. Seven o'clock, come early, I expect a good crowd. Parking is free, it can be validated at the desk of the library from the adjoining structure. And admission is free, and everybody is welcome. And I don't want to apologize for the December 14th date, because, first of all, this is the only time we were able to get these people here for this important event. And we have tried to skirt around the, all the occasions in Glendale. We've had the orchestra at the Alex, we've had the Festival of Trees, we've had other things going on in Glendale, and we've tried to work it out, so that Thursday will be the most available date for people to come to the library. So this is going to be a great opportunity, and I hope you all attend. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff, and citizens of Glendale. I hate to, my name is Margaret Hammond. I hate to turn up the heat on a boiling pot, but everywhere I have been this holiday season, recently, people have approached me about a burning subject, which has been discussed at city council for the last two weeks. The burning, and the burning question was, "Why is our city of Glendale, our Glendale, California, USA, city council, not Washington, D.C., taking on foreign diplomatic issues? Using our expensive resources, such as the assistant legal attorney, whom we pay $150,000 a year, putting hours and weeks in for a man who is not even a citizen of the country, and wherein we have no right interfering in other governments? What they do with their citizens is up to them. I'd like to see Canada come down and say to you, "You shouldn't be putting the death penalty." You tell them where to go." Okay. We go on, and, and it's not conducive to the interest of the city, or the quality of life of Glendale residents. Our problems in the city range from the very burning question of illegal grills not being closed down after 10 years of illegal grilling, graffiti remaining on buildings for two months awaiting legal action, and that's not to even mention, as far as the situation of being involved in legal things with foreign countries, the horrible case of a murder of a beautiful young woman, and her murderer running away to Armenia, who refused to extradite the murderer back to our, this country for legal action. You know, we have enough problems here, such as our terrific traffic jams, the gang activity, things that should be being taken care of by our legal departments. Forget our people paying those kind of, that kind of money, and putting in that kind of hours, in dealing with something that's none of our business. And I, I've heard this over and over, everywhere I went, people came up to me, and those were their words. "What the H are we doing, being involved in legal matters in another country? We're not diplomats, we have nothing to do with that. Look after what needs to be looked after here. We've got lots of things. As marvelous a city as we live in, we still have lots of things that need to be taken care of and cleaned up." I want to say one thing about Tom Miller, and I'm going to try to get through this. Last Thursday, he was at a dinner in La Cucina, or in La Cunyata Country Club. The city of Glendale Clean and Beautiful Committee was being honored by the La Cucina Chamber of Commerce, and we received many awards, and he sat at my table. The one thing that concerned him, he gulped down his dinner, and he had made his appearance. He was very concerned, his young daughters were at home, and he had had to ask a neighbor to take care of them. He wanted to get home to be sure that he would get them put into bed. He wanted to see them put to bed before, or see them, talk to them before they went to bed. And always, he really took advantage of the fact, and enjoyed his little girls, from the day I met him, when the first one was born, and the second one was born, and we could take a lesson from him, that he did love those little girls, and tried to do his best. And I'm sure they will remember what a kind man he was. He was always extremely kind to me, and I've known him through many organizations. And whenever I went to him and said, "Tom, what do you think we should do about this? Or what do you think we could do about that?" Even as far as the old timers, he was always very kind and listened to me, and gave me advice. So that's, I just want to say that in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela--
I just want to--
Yes, Mr.--
I just want to say, Margaret, I really have to disagree with you on this, and I think it's a, the community is dealing with a misconception as to what it is exactly we're doing. I understand that we're going to have this letter, this terrible letter, that apparently we're negotiating treaties with other countries. No, we're not doing that, and we're not diplomats. But what we are is human beings, and we care about the humanity of any individual that's in a tough situation. And it has nothing to do with the government of Armenia, or the, the city authorities of Yerevan. It's something that I would do personally for anyone who has any connections to Glendale, who was a resident of Glendale, who is in the same sort of situation in any other country. Someone in the news press today said, "Well, let's, let's have a letter for a gentleman in prison in Ireland for being a social democrat." Well, if that gentleman had any connections to Glendale, I would certainly be the first one to write a letter explaining his good deeds in the city of Glendale. Not to criticize the government, not to demand his release-- Not to criticize the government, not to demand his release, not to demand extradition, or to break him out of jail, or anything like that. But only on the humanitarian level is where I'm coming from with this letter. And folks, if we don't have the basic ounce of humanity in us to help an individual by writing a letter from the council merely to his attorney, not to the president of Armenia, explaining what kind of activities he was involved in in the United States during -- in Glendale during his short time, there's nothing wrong with that. And anyone who takes issue with that, from one human helping another human for the mere humanity of it, I really would disagree with them. And this letter will be put out, it's for anyone to read, please look through it, accuse us of negotiating international law, and you'll be mistaken. But it'll be out there, and again, I'll do that for anyone that requests it, that's in the same sort of situation, that has ties to Glendale. I know some of my colleagues disagree with me, and you're shaking your head, Margaret. If you get in trouble in Canada for some reason, I'll be the first one to request a letter indicating your commitment to the community and your involvement in community affairs.
I'm an American citizen.
I'll write it for anybody, Margaret.
Thank you.
Mr. Cantaro. I couldn't agree with you more, and what I find ironic is that this is the season where we talk about peace to men, goodwill, and peace and joy to the world and so forth. And I just find it so interesting that someone is in a prison, a person that's been in this city for over 10 years. He wasn't a casual resident, and there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of peace and goodwill to men going around.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Angela Vukos, I've been in Glendale, in the Glen Oaks Canyon for 42 years, almost. Last week, when I and others from Glen Oaks Canyon stood before you, we explained why we need to retain the bus service we've enjoyed for over 70 years. Removal of this bus would be sentencing some of us to a life of greater involuntary confinement within our homes, a loss of independence and a loss of freedom of mobility that is enjoyed by those who drive a car. You heard Anna Rubio ask, "Who is behind this?", after all these years. That question was answered the next day, when it was learned that a councilman who had only moved into the area a little over two years ago had been contacting Metro, advising them that many people were complaining about the bus, and that they should promptly remove it from the canyon. When this questionable and possibly unethical behavior was made public, accusations were erroneously made against Mayor Weaver. The factual information disclosed was also erroneously labeled a rumor. It was made to appear that everyone else but one was not telling the truth. In other words, everyone else is a liar. I am here to state that Mayor Weaver was in no way involved in initiating the facts about the Metro context, which eventually came out, and that they were not rumors. Regarding the signing of a petition to retain the bus, we secured 65 signatures at that meeting, and I asked the councilman to sign it as he was leaving. I was unaware of what may have been going on behind the scenes, even though his objections to the bus had already been made in public and had been addressed at that meeting. All of this hard-akened problem appears to be the result of one powerful man who indiscreetly and secretively uses that power for his own comfort and pleasure, without apparent concern for the welfare of the residents of this canyon, his own neighbors. This should be intolerable. Yesterday, I was on the bus, I know they make fun of the bus, but the bus drivers know what's going on, and told the bus driver, "I may not be seeing you anymore." He said, and I'm going to quote you, he said, "Yeah, that one man just didn't want this bus." I hope this clarifies some issues regarding this matter. In addition, we need and want the noisy Metro bus operating in Glen Oaks Canyon, as it has been in the 70 years past, and that is the truth. I just heard that they may be putting in a minibus to connect to the 201 line. As an example, this means somehow I will have to make three perfect connections to get from my home to even go to Virgil's Hardware. For the good of this great city of Glendale, may only truth, courtesy, and respect for others ring out from these rooms. Thank you for your kind attention.
Next speaker. Mr. Yesefian.
Ma'am, did I -- you did not say, "Did I sign the petition or not?"
I asked you--
My signature on the petition or not?
I said here that I caught you when you were leaving.
Was the -- did I sign the petition or not?
Sir.
Did I sign the petition or not?
Next speaker, Paul Chamberlain. Last speaker.
That was in 2002, by the way.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished councilmen. My name is Paul Chamberlain, I'm a resident of Glen Oaks Canyon. It's been several years since I stood at this podium and spoke on behalf of the residents of Glen Oaks Canyon, defending at that time against the building of the DODI project. Tonight I speak also defending the Glen Oaks residents, and indirectly, all of those non-driving Glendale citizens, who must depend upon public transportation, public transportation. You've heard and discussed all of the problems associated with the removal of the 201 bus line from Glen Oaks Canyon, so I will make my comments very brief. I challenge each one of you to do your civic duty with regard to your Glendale residents' Make sure our canyon families can continue to count on public transportation to serve their needs and requirements. Don't abandon them. As public servants, find a way to keep the 2.1 mile bus service in Glen Oaks Canyon Thank you.
Mr. Nodrian.
Okay, now, we do have some good news. I guess now would be -- now is the appropriate time. I know the mayor--
The whole communication is over.
-- some response. We do have some good news. As I mentioned last week, I was working very hard with our city staff and with the staff at the MTA, as well as my deputy at the MTA, to do something to keep this line going, to continue to serve the residents. And last week, Ms. Vukos and Ms. Rubio came forward and really brought forth, highlighted their concerns, as well as quite a large number of emails that we got recently, probably more emails, I think, than people actually drive the bus, but ride the bus, but that's beside the point. My colleagues also echoed your remarks and encouraged me to find a way through the MTA and through our staff to make -- to achieve some sort of solution to this bus cutting. MTA was going to cut the bus line. There's nothing we could do, nothing I could do at the MTA level to make them keep that same bus, that 40-foot bus, continue right along Glen Oaks Canyon up to its terminus. The MTA was facing many, many problems, and were -- they were operating with a $100 million deficit. So they had to cut bus lines and try and trim their expenses, and someone or some group of people, I think it was the San Gabriel Valley Sector, decided that this one mile of route up Glen Oaks Canyon was on the chopping block, and they chopped it. But what we did do was go out and try and find money. The next best thing, besides the bus, obviously, is money. We were trying to dig up some money through the MTA, through different channels and through different accounts, wherein we could institute a stopgap measure from now until our next fiscal year, where we would have the funds implemented and programmed to put our entire short-range transit plan together. We were very fortunate in obtaining about $45,000 of money, which will fund a shuttle service. It's not going to be the big bus, Angela, it's going to be something smaller, it's going to be something that will make, obviously, less noise for those folks in the canyon. It'll be probably a little smoother ride, but this is going to be a stopgap measure. We're going to operate it seven days a week initially, and we're going to try and tailor it specifically to your needs, the folks of Glen Oaks Canyon. This is why we were asking some of those questions last week about what time periods you felt were most critical for the bus to be operating. As soon as we get a survey and get an idea as to how the ridership is going to be, I'm told that Jono, working with Steve, are going to tailor it and try and make those funds be used in the most efficient and economical way to last us until June, when we can get -- implement our full range, our short-range transit plan. It's not -- obviously, it's not what you were looking for. I know that everyone there was looking for a continuation of that line. Perhaps we did have some time in advance to try and deal with it, but I kept telling folks, we were working very hard on this. We did get to it, and it wouldn't have happened without the support of all the councilmen up here. And just for your information, I did my own investigation in the MTA, and I was unable to find any sort of sabotage by anyone on the council. So I'm not sure if that clears your name, Mr. Yesefian, but as far as I'm concerned--
Never.
-- as far as I could investigate, we didn't have -- there's no smoking gun, and your fingerprints weren't on any of the kill route 201 issues. But that's not the point, let's not look backwards, let's look forwards. I know that with the threat of 201 being cut, a lot of people were anxious. I've gotten your emails, we've all gotten your emails. Let's let the bygones be bygones, let's look forward, you're going to have a substitute service, you're going to be able to make your appointments, you may have to make another transfer, I'm sorry about that, but in all circumstances, this is the best that we could do. We worked very hard on it, and we weren't going to leave you out in the cold. This is, I don't want to say it's a Christmas gift, but it's something that's hopefully going to tide the canyon over until the implementation of our short-range plan. And it's not, as I said, it wasn't one person that did it, it was a group of people that worked hard to try and make this happen, and your input was very helpful. You brought it, your timing was great, you brought it to our attention, you know, at the critical moment, and the stars were aligned. We had just gone through some funding with the MTA, and there was some money available and a few pots of money, and that's what we grabbed, so there it is, and enjoy the new ride.
Thank you.
I was going to say, perhaps another long-term solution would be the -- a beeline route. If we could examine a full-service beeline route sometime in the future. I know we're redoing, I don't mean this time around, but whenever it ends, it's something to at least think about.
That is the short-range transit plan. Solution is beelined, but not a full-size bus, but probably smaller buses that we put on residential streets.
No, I know that, but I'm saying that could also be a long-term solution if we had a beeline route.
Oh yeah, no, that's -- yeah, we call it short-range transit, but it's really a long-term solution, but it's going to take us a while before we can implement that program. Because remember, we spend every penny of prop ANC money we get, so if we expand in some area or take over service without being compensated by MTA, then we have to cut back someplace else. You recall from the mobility study, we believe we can make savings in the routing of our buses and efficiencies, so in the long term, we can extend additional service and replace that Route 201. And that's what we're working towards.
Mr. Yesefian.
Mr. Mayor, just a suggestion. I think as you drive Glen Oaks Canyon, you see all the old stop signs, I mean, the old stops for the bus, and there's a sign on it saying that they're going to discontinue service. I'm assuming we're going to use the same stop signs for now. Maybe we could just go ahead and put another sign underneath and let them know that there will be a continuation of service by a different vehicle, an identified vehicle, because there are some individuals who are used to that vehicle. There's actually a blind person, I don't know if he's still using it or not, but I think he can't see real well, but when he sees a big vehicle, he has a tendency to raise his cane, thinking that is the bus. So I think that'll be very helpful to let people know that we will have this between now and the 17th, so they know that something else is replacing it, and keep the same exact bus stops that are there, so they could use them until we have a final solution to it on June.
Mr. Yesefian will do that, along with all the means of notification that we can get out through our website and the buses.
Is there a way we can put a decal on the side of the van or something?
You can look at making the vans--
Shuttle the 201 or something, yeah.
-- and the drivers will be very cooperative during this period. They'll be asking people, they'll be telling people, "This is a replacement service for 201, we're taking you to down to here, we're stopping at these different locations." There'll be a lot of communication to make sure that folks are aware of what's transpired.
Mr. Starburt.
Never mind, Mr. Mayor, I'll hold it.
Thank you. That ends oral communications. And when is that topic on oral communications going to come to us?
Sometime--
You kind of exceeded it again tonight.
Sometime early next year.
Thank you. What is next, please?
Item number seven, adoption of ordinances. There is none, moving on to eight action items. Director of Information Services at 8A regarding continuation of computer database administration services. At 8A1 is motion approving the amended contract, amendment number two, for services of RightMind Enterprises for the entire Information Services Department.
Staff need a report, I do have two speakers. Want to hear the speakers, please? First speaker, Barry Allen, two minutes, followed by Herbert Milano, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, Mr. Starburt, and certainly the public. I'm Barry Allen. I looked at some of the materials on RightMind Enterprises, and you're going to be asking, you're being asked to fund a million dollars for the next five years for database management. Now, I know you've all read the materials and you understand what this is all about. I'm involved with a management consulting firm. We have projects in different parts throughout the world. And one of the things that we do is database management, software development, all sorts of things related to computers, and to networks, and to servers, and to SQL. And the people that are available, that know, for instance, PeopleSoft and some of the other systems that you have, are really experts in it. You know something? They don't get that kind of money. I think you really need to take another look at this, shop it out, and I see some of the other numbers that are in the staff report, quite surprised. And by the way, in my checking, I don't find that there is a corporation called RightMind Enterprises, so it's probably something, a salary situation, so someone can, oh, probably subvert the IRS with their tax monies. But I think you need to take another look at this. I know certainly it's on here, and you're going to vote to pass it, but remember, we're looking, we're looking for accountability. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard.
Next speaker, Herbert Milano.
Good evening, my name is Herbert Milano. As some of you know, I'm a systems consultant, and from time to time, I'm actually asked to evaluate proposals and projects, and I thought perhaps I can be of some contributing factor to this issue. I personally have an issue with such a long-term contract of five years. I personally have an issue with such a long-term contract of five years. I believe that contracts extending two years or two and a half years would be more than sufficient. But what is missing here are objectives. It's stated in your documents that you have 26 different databases. Let me tell you what, how that translated into practical terms. About four years ago, I wanted to have an evaluation of how we were going to disseminate the information concerning the housing issues, how we were going to communicate to tenants information with regard to the just cause for eviction. And to my surprise, the database concerning home addresses and residences in the Department of Water and Power could not communicate with the database information that is available in the Housing Department. One of the objectives for most companies today is to integrate their information, to integrate the data, to make it accessible. And without tangible outcomes, it just means that this is only a maintenance-type contract. And maybe in nature, it's a maintenance-type contract, but without tangible outcomes, I believe that you will not get as much benefit out of a contract like this than by stating clearly how it is that you're going to consolidate and make efficient the access to information that we all need to make good decisions.
Thank you. Do you have no more cards? Is there motion 8A1?
Question.
Mr. Manukian?
There was a statement that this was a $1 million contract. What is the fee for this contract? Annual fee?
$240,000.
It is a maximum of $240,000 a year, so for a five-year, you could get up to that number. It's a max, it's $120 an hour.
Okay. So it's for five years, $240,000 a year?
Right.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add on to that. You'll note in the staff report, we've done comparisons with like-type systems, including Pasadena and Burbank, and what they're currently spending on their consulting firms for these kinds of services. And contrary to the comments made here, this is an extremely competitive rate for this type of work. And we know our two neighboring cities have a like-type system and the same level and volume of database management here.
And what is their costs?
It's 330 and 540. 540.
Right, and one of those is an estimate. Burbank is about 330,000. Couple of other factors that, from my experience with the city, if you recall when we were having such difficulties with our accounting software as we stabilized our system, point number one is we, we discovered that providing database, database services in a different way than we had previously was a key, if not the key, to transitioning to a more stable environment where we could create these test environments, where we could zero in on performance problems of the system. That's number one. Number two, we did a, in effect, a nationwide search at that point to find someone with the unique skill set that, on, on the various databases, the Oracle Database, the PeopleSoft System Work, and there are two or three others, technical terms that I don't even understand. But the combination of those skills was very unique and defined with one firm or one individual. So that is why we, that is how we found this, this particular firm and person, is through that kind of a nationwide search. And, and frankly, it has been so successful, not only in terms of stabilizing the environment, but in, in saving funds on our upgrades, that we, we are recommending with this contract an expansion of the scope and responsibilities of the, of the firm for database administration.
Thank you. Mr. Yusefian.
Francis, while you're here, I know it's probably last day, I don't want to question your judgment, but nevertheless, we are talking about a five-year contract with another five-year extension. In computer industry, 10 years, a lot can change. Like, in two years, a lot changes. So my uncomfortableness, I was going to vote against this, not because I don't, because I have an issue with the amount, my issue is more with the term. I feel more comfortable approving a three-year project and saying, in three years, let's look at it again. This firm may be the right fit three years from now, and, but it may not be the right fit. So in three years, then you make another decision, what you want to do. Tying our hands for five years, you could have several generations of software come and go, and I don't know if they are the best for that particular generation. That's, that's the only thing that I have an issue with. So would you have an issue with a three-year contract?
I won't be here, so, so no, I don't have an issue.
If I can, I think a point of clarification. Bob, what's the termination clause in the contract?
Yeah, we have a 30-day.
So what we have here is a potential lock-in of a commitment of services and pricing that can be terminated within 30, within 30 days. So it's not, not like we're locked in. So I think that's important to point out. This isn't what you think of as a, as a, you know, put-or-pay type contract. This is a case where, frankly, it's to our advantage to have a term and a pricing schedule that lets us have the option. If the services aren't required, we can terminate.
There's also a scheduling, if we, if we need the services less than full-time, it's, there's the hourly rate, which is the basis of this contract.
So that really locks in the flexibility for us.
But in all due respect, Mr. City Manager, I don't know that. All I have in here is on amendment number two, it says, "Term is amended as follow. This agreement shall be for the period of five years commencing on January 1st, 2007. City shall have no option for an, city shall have one option for an additional five-year term to review the agreement and prior approval of the city manager or director of administrative services or director of information services."
Mr. Howard, would you like to comment?
So I don't have the full contract, I have no clue.
Mr. Howard, Mr. Howard, would you like to comment?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I cannot, I have not reviewed the contract. But certainly, we would if it's the, if it's the council's desire to have a 30-day termination provision.
Is there a 30-day termination in the contract?
Yes. In the contract, it is not in your package.
That's understandable. That's why I raised it with a point of clarification, you didn't have it, and so it, it does sound like it's one of those lock-in type contracts. But for these kinds of services, it really isn't a lock-in, it really gives us a lot of flexibility.
Then I'm okay with it. Okay, is there motion 8A1?
I just have a question.
Yes, Mr.?
Sorry, I just want to make clear that, according to the report, that Burbank deals with this, with these services by paying $540,000.
Correct.
Three staffers, a consultant, and a manager. And the other individual that did it on a per-database basis, the other company, they estimated out at $330,000 annually.
Correct.
And we don't pay these guys in bundles of cash, do we?
Is that a pay-as-you-go?
We don't pay them in bundles of cash. We pay them in a check.
Right.
We have a tax ID number.
Yes, oh, yes.
Give them a W-2 or a 1099 at the end of the year.
99s.
Are they legitimate?
Yes.
Operation?
Yes.
Is there a reason why their name isn't?
The only reason I can imagine is it's not a California corporation.
Are we concerned that they're hiding from the IRS or not?
No, no, I mean, we report to the IRS, with the 1099.
We report it, and if they want to cheat, they can cheat.
IRS will go after them.
Just for the record, just because they're an out-of-state, whatever entity, doesn't mean that they're not subject to the IRS. The IRS doesn't recognize state borders.
That's true.
Right. I was saying, that's the only reason I could imagine it wouldn't come up on some kind of a search, is that it, you know, it wasn't, maybe it was not picking up out of state.
Is there motion 8A1?
Move 8A1.
Second, but the final question is, this isn't a company that you formed privately. Well, go on, you're a county, right, Mr. Francis? Way over my head.
With those last words on your last action, or maybe not. I will call.
Councilmembers Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi, next, please.
8A is Director of Administrative Services regarding proposed ordinance amending salary ordinances for certain officers, subordinate officers, assistants, deputies, clerks, and employees of the City of Glendale for their compensation. At B1 is ordinance for introduction, GCA and hourly classifications, and at B2 is ordinance for introduction, GMA.
These are ordinances for introduction only. If only discussion, I have two speakers.
This is an opportunity to have Mr. Franz back up here another time.
That's what I, we'll see how it goes. Barry Allen, two minutes, followed by Herbert Milano, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Starbird, staff, and the public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. I looked this over, and I see that we're going to be giving pay raises, and we're going to be doing all sorts of things, and I thought the key thing was the net fiscal impact of approval of all recommended changes will be to reduce salary costs. I think, gee, I think we ought to give all 24, 2,600 employees raises so we could cut our expenses. I think that'd absolutely be great, and I think the public would love it. But I don't understand it. I just don't understand it. I've looked at this, I've seen that you're going to create two new positions, and then you're going to fill them, and that you've taken another position, you cut it back, but the person that's in that position is, is being paid more than that position. The librarian is going to be covered by a state grant, but I think what we need to do is look at something more than this year. What's going to happen in 10 years? What's going to happen with these raises in five years? And where are the benefits, and where are the pensions, and where are those numbers that need to be in here so that you gentlemen can make a decision? Now, we know that you're going to pass it, there's no question of it. But I think you need to know what the long-term cost of this is, not what just the short-term. So remember that when you ask the questions of Mr. Franz, you know, he needs to be able to tell you this because it is the last shot at him. You know, he's going to be able to give you these numbers so that you can understand them, and the people that are watching on, on Channel 6 and on the Wide World Web, Worldwide Web, will be able to see it as well. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard, looking for accountability.
Wide World of Sports.
Wide World, something like that, or Interplay, or, no, I won't go there. Thank you, Mr. Manukian.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Herbert Milano, Mayor David Weaver, members of the City Council and city staff. I'm addressing this issue in particular to one position in position number five, which is the Economic Development Manager, a position that I thought was being held by Mr. David Ahern. A couple of times, I have gone out to the redevelopment office to make some inquiries concerning that position, and it is my understanding that that position was primarily a way of cozying up to the automobile dealerships and making sure that they're happy. I was very much interested to see how the Economic Development Manager was going to handle the issue with regard to the merchants on brand and the impact that the roads would have on their businesses. Because in many cases, these businesses went under, in many cases, they had reductions in their sales to the public by 60%, 40%, and it was a tremendous hardship. So I wanted to know, how does an Economic Development Manager handle these issues? I'm assuming that a position like this will have very specific objectives with regard to the increased income and increased tax that we collect for merchants and businesses. I would like to know if there is such a number, because I know from studies of the regional economics of cities that are, let's say, like Burbank and Pasadena, that we rank 50% below Burbank in terms of our sales tax revenue, at least this was about three years ago. Hopefully, with Americana, that will improve, but what is the position of this individual? What are the targets vis-à-vis Burbank, for example? How are we going to make these areas, commercial areas, more vibrant? What are the objectives? What are the goals? Without that, we will be continuing to add simply more staff without any true accountability to performance measures. Thank you.
I have no more cards. All my colleagues want to do, these are ordinances for introduction.
I'll introduce both ordinances.
Ordnances have been introduced, they will be voted on in...
Next week.
Next week. Thank you. Next, please.
Nine is a hearing. Nine is Acting Director of Planning, Director of Development Services regarding proposed ordinance amending Title 16 and Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code relating to definitions of lots. 9A1 is ordinance for introduction.
This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Got no cards. Public hearing is closed. My colleagues need any kind of report on this. Mr. Yusefian.
I have one question from the city attorney, which I have asked, but I'm going to ask anyway because I thought just some inquiring minds may want to know. This modification to the ordinance that deals with a new definition of what a lot is, would that change or make it easier for a legal subdivision, specifically the one that is in the northern part of the city, to become legal?
Short answer, no. The ordinance really is directed to the lots in town center to create essentially what we're calling airlots. And it's very specific to those lots in the town center-specific plan area. It will not affect lots in illegal or other subdivisions.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce the ordinance. Thank you. What is next, please?
Any new business?
Mr. Manukian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council of the City of Glendale, Glendale, hereby authorizes the city attorney to institute legal proceedings against Alanush Ambarchin and thus 1 through 20 in order to recover medical and other expenses the city has paid for the benefit of an employee under the Workers Compensation Insurance and Safety Act. The council further authorizes the city attorney to seek recovery for property damages to the city vehicle involved in the accident.
Second. Move, seconded. Phil call, please.
Councilmembers Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi, what's next, please?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Hold on a minute.
To adjourn in memory of...
Tom Miller. He's down to adjourn 8:32 PM.